I call the Monday, March 25th, 2019, meeting of the Marquette City Commission in order. If you would please rise with the commission and repeat the pledge of allegiance.
Aye. And the pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, if you will, please do the roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Campana?
Here.
Commissioner Frazier?
Here.
Commissioner Hill?
Commissioner Schlegel?
Here.
Commissioner Smith? Mayor Protem Reynolds?
Here.
And Mayor Stonehouse?
Here. Commissioners Smith and Hill are absent. I will need a motion to excuse their absence. Commissioner Campana?
I'd like to motion to excuse Commissioners Smith and Commissioner Hill as they are out of town.
Mayor Protem Reynolds?
Second.
Commissioner Campana, any comments? None.
None.
All in favor of excusing Commissioners Hill and Smith, please signify by saying yes. Yes. Any opposed by no. Motion passes five to zero. That brings us down to the agenda. Commissioners, any changes to the agenda that we want to look at? Seeing none, a motion for the approval of the agenda. Commissioner Frazier?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Is there a second? Commissioner Schlegel?
Second.
Any comments, Commissioner Frazier?
No.
Commissioner Schlegel?
None.
All those in favor of accepting or approving the agenda, please signify by saying yes. Yes. Any opposed by no. Hearing none, motion passes five to zero. That brings us to announcements. The only announcement I have is that, for those folks at home, we do have a malfunctioning camera system again, which means we have one wide-angle camera only that we're using, rather than the individual cameras. We will do our best to have this repaired by next meeting, but for this meeting, again, only one camera shot will be available. Boards and committees, we will be recognizing an outgoing member, and that is Maureen Sullivan of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Maureen, are you here? Would you please come to the podium? We have two gifts for you in recognition of your very fine work. Gift number one, gift number one, presentation number one, is this signed certificate attesting to your performance as a member of that committee.
Thank you.
And perhaps even more important, is an official City of Marquette tee-shirt. If the color does not meet with your approval, you can see the city manager's office, and they will do their best to change that.
Thank you.
But thank you very much for your service.
Thank you very much.
We have one appointment tonight. Jackie Stark to the Marquette Housing Commission for an on-expired term ending 2/12/23. Two appointments, excuse me. And Brett Schwanki, Market Housing Commission for an on-expired term ending 6/14/21. Commissioners, can I have a motion for the appointment of those? Mayor Protem?
I move that we appoint Jackie Stark to the Market Housing Commission for an on-expired term ending February 12th, 2023, and Brett Schwanki to the Market Housing Commission for an on-expired term ending June 14th, 2021.
Is there a second? Commissioner Campana?
I second that.
Mayor Protem Reynolds, any comments?
Not, other than, thanks for stepping up.
Commissioner Campana?
Just glad to see them serving.
Any other commissioners? All those in favor of the appointments, please signify by saying yes. Yes. Any opposed by no. Hearing none, motion passes five to zero. That brings us to the first public comment period. And reminder that comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address when addressing the commission. Are there any public comments?
You're Melankin in 8 Market Drive, City of Marquette. I want to thank you for appointing two new members for my housing commission and the chair of that board, and it's been challenging to run that board with just three of us. So, thank you for reappointing, or to appointing the commissioners as an ongoing thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to address the commission?
I am Alice Reynolds, 220 Northwoods Road, Number 6, Marquette. I am here to, for Number 8, so I am a member of the Marquette Playgrounds for All, that we will be, hopefully, our plan is to have it down at Matson Park, for, it's a universal playground, that will allow children, like my son who's not a child anymore, he's 30 in June, and others with developmental and physical disabilities, to be able to use a playground for kind of a universal thing. So, it's both for kids who are disabled and those who are not, and it will have places for caregivers to go, so, to be. So, it's a really wonderful, wonderful thing, and if you have any questions, I'm hoping two other members from our committee will be here before Number 8 happens. So, if you have any questions, please ask. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to address the commission?
Barb Coleman, 985 West College Avenue, Marquette. I, too, am commenting on item Number 8, the DNR Trust Fund Grant. I am on the Playgrounds for All Committee, as Alice, and I'm just very delighted that the city is taking up this process now to truly bring our parks into a accessibility for all. This is not just about ADA access, but it truly is looking at the idea of universal design for the, so that people, all people can use all of our parks. So, I'm really glad that we're starting that process with the Matson Park project, and I want to thank you for that.
Thank you. Anyone else to address the committee or commission?
Frank Jeffery, 350 East Ridge, Marquette, these are my opinions. What's with this new traffic scheme? Even the most modern equipment is only as smart as those who program it. For what we paid, we are in sick need of better synchronization on West Washington unless the planners are in cahoots with our gas stations and auto repair shops. The same mentality applies to this board's failure to provide depictions for the audience. Our costly new equipment isn't being used for the purpose it was installed. We keep reminding this board, yet our members continue to ignore us beyond the point of suspicion. Now, tonight, the camera's not working properly. While nearly all of us are enthralled by the prospect of reusing the old piers, the proposed placement of the mostly private boathouse just offshore on the main pier has opened old wounds. None of seven members was willing to explain why a boathouse wasn't incorporated, as hoped, into the new adjacent building, the looks of which I hear nothing but complaints about. My plans to store the skulls there pacified everyone. We are dead, sick, tired of the lies and rumors that always turn for the worse. We have a stake in this, thus a right to know, yet this board's responses are largely deceptive, containing no solutions that can move us in a positive direction. Hence, our immersion back into this boathouse fiasco. Act Three now. Act Three in terms of deception and the animosity that needlessly divides our community. We thank Ms. Hill for suggesting we handle skull storage as a separate item, and Ms. Reynolds for wanting a see-through structure similar to my recommendation. As with our cannabis item, the women were more responsive to our specific concerns and thought cerebrally, while the men festered in their testosterone baths, figuring, let's ignore Frank regardless of the validity of his suggestions, even when it affects the public majority, 62% of whom voted to legalize weed. If the boathouse can't be incorporated into the new Albatross One building, can it be built at the south end of the boardwalk? Or maybe at one of the two existing docks? Or perhaps the Cinder Pond Marina, as suggested, but ignored when we replaced the building? Our members need to rectify our real concerns instead of merrily responding to what's convenient. More old wounds opened on March 11th, when Mr. Frazier dared to say that I went after someone's wife? An utter defamatory lie, in front of seven high schoolers, no less. Of course, they realized that didn't happen on March 11th, and it never happened any other day either. The last time a group of kids attended, Ms. Reynolds retold that same lie, yet neither was able to recall a word of what they thought I'd said. A test ought to be administered to commission applicants to assure they're qualified, not based on a family name or if the guy was a good pharmacist. The two hats don't necessarily translate, as we've unmistakably seen. For example, can they read a site plan and visualize how proposals will appear in the real world? Cases in point, all three boathouse proposals and the urbanization of our entrance to Lighthouse
Anyone else to address the commission? Anyone else? Hearing none, public comment is closed. Seeing none, public comment is closed. That brings us to item Number 3, Harbor Advisory Committee Report by the Chair Lynn Van Rulsters. Lynn, if you would come forward, please.
Good evening. So, I just want to present a little bit of information about the Harbor Advisory Committee and what we've been up to for the last year. We are currently at two vacancies on our board, which is an improvement over our previous year. Of the 12 meetings for 2018, we had eight of them. The other four didn't have an agenda. Our purpose is to advise the city commission on the shoreline and offshore waters near Marquette. We have seven members that serve three-year terms. Our meetings are the third Tuesday of the month at 5:15, usually at the Citizens Forum in Lakeview Arena, except in November, December, because we run into holidays where the second Tuesday of the month. So, the last year, the things that we've accomplished, we recommended the 2019 seasonal marina rate structure. We approved the strategic plans. We held stakeholder meetings and provided feedback for founders' landing and peer reuse concepts. And we provided feedback and approved the conceptual design for the Prescott Marina Pier Replacement Project. For the upcoming year, we expect to review the strategic priorities in the Harbor Master Plan, engage in the waterfront use policies, and advise the waterfront projects which involve motorized or non-motorized watercraft, including Prescott Marina, founders' landing, piers, and the Or Dock. Some of the things of issues and discussion we've had, or that we expect may come up, are future Lake Superior waterfront access and/or use, community recreational use of the watercraft, motorized and non-motorized recreational watercraft, commercial watercraft, winter recreational trends on waterfront and/or water, and we continue to work on our committee membership and recruitment. Any questions? Short and sweet.
Please, Commissioner Frazier.
Have your board figured out how you're going to store the boats on the ice this year in the marina?
Not yet.
Just here, we're at it.
Any other, Commissioner Schlegel?
Yeah, thanks. Number one, visually, very pleasing presentation. Liked it earlier in the week when we received it, but it's a, it's a committee that is, seems to be growing nicely, and I appreciate the hard work that you guys are putting into that, and I hope that you can fill up the rest of the vacant seats. It is very important, especially with everything, how we value the lakeshore, that you guys have the proper say in there. So, keep pushing for it and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other commissioners? Let me, let me jump in then. You had a comment there about winter waterfront trends. What are you seeing there, and how can you explain that a little better?
Yes. Some of the winter waterfront trends that are coming up and may be, we may be addressing, skate sailing. If you've seen that, heard of that? That's one of the things that's a possibility, possibly some ice fishing, just different things that we hear talk of in the area.
Okay.
Do you know what skate sailing is?
I see that. See, I grew up down on Green Bay, so we have a little bit more stable ice situation, but between that and ice skating, it's very popular. Pretty cool.
We're getting more and more people that are, I think, exploring the ice caves on Prescott in the winter, and I wonder if that's something that the committee should be looking at, in terms of how we do that in a safe manner, or whether there's controls that we ought to consider. Obviously, anytime you're on the ice, there's an element of concern, but yet they make it very popular out at the Apostle Islands, for example, every few years when they have that opportunity. So, I just throw that out as a, as a wonder if thing.
We'll add it to our suggestions.
Any other comments, commissioners? Seeing none, thank you very much for your time. Thank you very much for the work you've done. Please pass on to the committee, I think, the thanks of the city commission for what you're doing. It is deeply appreciated.
Thank you.
That brings us down to a public hearing, which is item Number 4, and that is the fireworks ordinance, reminding myself, as well as others, that that will take a roll call vote. Clerk, if you could please read the background.
Thank you, Mayor. Background. In 2016, the city commission adopted an ordinance establishing guidelines for the use of fireworks within city limits. In late 2018, Michigan legislature amended the state regulations in a way that offered additional flexibility. Municipalities looking to regulate the local use of consumer fireworks. In summary, this ordinance amendment will allow for the use of consumer fireworks in the city on New Year's Eve, the weekend prior to Memorial Day, the weekend prior to Labor Day, and a handful of days surrounding the Fourth of July holiday. The city commission scheduled this public hearing at the March 11th regular meeting. Fiscal effect, none by this action. Recommendation, following the public hearing, adopt ordinance Number 677, amending the Marquette City Code, Section 26-88, fireworks. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
I declare the public hearing open. Anyone wishing to address the commission on this ordinance?
I printed out the agenda and put it in the wrong bag. Margaret Brum, 404 East Magnetic Street. I spoke last fall when I originally saw the fireworks ordinance, because there were so many holidays listed, and I'll just rattle off what used to be the case. New Year's Day, birthday Martin Luther King Jr., Washington's birthday, Memorial Day, Independence Day, Labor Day, Columbus Day, Veterans Day, Thanksgiving Day, and Christmas Day. And I made the point that some of those holidays just aren't traditional fireworks days, and I was told that the state required that as the list of holidays. I'm just standing up here to say I'm delighted to see that some common sense came from Lansing, and they have shortened the list of holidays, and we no longer have to worry about being blasted out of our lives on Columbus Day and Thanksgiving Day, but the more traditional New Year's Eve, around Memorial Day, around the Fourth of July, around Labor Day, these are holidays where people might expect to be out and might expect to have some fireworks. And I appreciate that. I also appreciate that this ordinance is very specific as to time, which will make it a lot easier for people to call for help if it's outside the required hours. And I know in the past, that's been a difficult thing. So, again, many times you get people coming up here saying, I don't like something I read, it's not right, it doesn't match. I very much appreciate this change. It was worth the time and effort that it took to make this change, and I know how hard it is to keep going through something and keep going through something, but this is well worth the change. Personally speaking, my dog Stormy has died, so I am no longer as afraid of loud noises as I used to be, but I will get another dog, and I'm sure I'll go through the same thing with the new dog. So, this is good work. It's well done, and I appreciate the effort that you went to, to amend it, instead of just, you know, saying, we've spent enough time on this, let's move on. So, thank you very much.
Anyone else to address the commission?
Frank Jeffery, it's a lot better than it was. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Commissioners, any comments? Oh, well, we can do it that way, but geez, I mean, I mean, you know, we're just kind of drifting here anyway. Commissioners, I need a motion. Commissioner Frazier?
I make a motion to adopt ordinance Number 677, amending Marquette City Code, Section 26-88, the fireworks.
Is there a second? Commissioner Reynolds?
Second.
Commissioner Frazier, comments?
Making progress.
Commissioner Frazier, or Commissioner Reynolds?
I knew what you meant. Nothing further to add. I think this is great. I'm glad we can even do this, make this even tighter of a ordinance, and I'm glad that Lansing did something so that we could have something better for our citizens.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner Schlegel?
I'm going to echo the sentiment here. The big issue that I see here is going to be further education for the public, making sure that, whether it's city public releases or press releases, whatever it might be, is getting out soon enough so that people truly understand the changes and that they will be held responsible. I think we need to have some understanding, as neighbors, to the, especially the first year of this. And I would also expect to see, after the next holiday, especially the Fourth of July, where people would come in and say, well, I called the police, but they couldn't come because there's only so many people out there that can, that can respond to those phone calls. So, I think it's up to neighbors to be neighbors and to be neighborly about it. If you have people in the past that have been in violation, I would certainly talk to them about it prior to these holidays, so that they're not going to be, you know, surprised when you go over there and you start, you know, going off on them because of what they're doing. So, please, help us, help the city by educating your neighbors and making sure that people are aware of the changes. But it's a, it's a great change, and I'm glad to see it. Thank you.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner Campana?
Just like to reiterate what was already said, but the fact is, they're reducing the amount of days that one can set off fireworks, which makes sense here, and also the times have been reduced somewhat. For the most part, it has to stop at 11:45 at night. Previously, I think it was 1 o'clock, so that makes sense. And we still have the rules where you can't do it on somebody else's property, public property, like the streets, church property, school property. It has to be on your own property, so this kind of restricts people so they're not running around the neighborhood shooting off fireworks. So, this is a good ordinance. There's no reason anybody should have a problem with this. Thank you.
Any other commissioners? Let me just comment then, as the chair, that I think this is a great opportunity. It's a great ordinance that's taking a problem and making it just a little bit better. Certainly, I thank the state for allowing us to do that and to move back a little bit into the realm of community government. All that said, commissioners, time for the vote. It will be a roll call vote. The clerk will administer the roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Campana?
Yes.
Commissioner Frazier?
Yep.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Commissioner, Mayor Protem Reynolds?
Yes.
Mayor Stonehouse?
Yes. The vote passes five to zero. That brings us down to the consent agenda. Commissioners, Commissioner Reynolds?
I move that the consent agenda be approved.
Is there a second? Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
Commissioner Reynolds, comments?
None.
Commissioner Frazier?
No.
Any other commissioner? That said, all those commissioners in favor of passing the consent agenda as written, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Those opposed by no, motion passes five to zero. That brings us down to new business, and Number 6, being the Marquette Beautification and Restoration Committee Petunia Pandemonium Project. Clerk, if you will, please read the background.
Thank you, sir. Background. The Marquette Beautification and Restoration Committee, Inc. is a well-respected leader within our community and a vital longstanding partner with the city. For many years, the city commission has designated the committee as an authorized volunteer for the purpose of planting flowers during Petunia Pandemonium and removal of the flowers in the fall. The Michigan Department of Transportation approved the attached permit allowing the activities described in the permit for the purpose of carrying out the Petunia Pandemonium Project. Fiscal effect, none by this action. Recommendation, approve and designate the Marquette Beautification and Restoration Committee, Inc. as the city's authorized volunteer for the purpose of carrying out the activities of the Petunia Pandemonium Project as allowed by the MDOT permit. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Commissioners, is there a motion? Commissioner Campana?
I'd like to move that we approve and designate the Marquette Beautification and Restoration Committee, Inc. as the city's authorized volunteer for the purpose of carrying out the activities of the Petunia Pandemonium Project as allowed by the MDOT permit.
Is there a second? Mayor Protem Reynolds?
Second.
Commissioner Campana, comments?
We are fortunate to have the Beautification Committee in our midst, who, they do many projects for the city, they make the city a more attractive place, and this is probably one of their most visible and well-appreciated projects, so we're glad to have them do this.
Mr. Reynolds?
I just echo Commissioner Campana's comments, that the Beautification Committee does a great job, and I'm glad that we can continue to help them out in this venture.
Any other commissioner? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes. Yes. Those opposed by no. Hearing none, the motion passes five to zero. Next item up is Number 7, and that is Front Third and Altamont Street Reconstruction Projects. Clerk, if you will, please read the background.
Thank you, Mayor. Background. Plans have been developed for the package reconstruction project of Front Street, Third Street, and Altamont Street, in accordance with prior planning commission and city commission approval, master plan, and capital improvement plan requirements. The work will consist of water main replacement and service work, sanitary sewer main replacement extension, replacement of sanitary sewer laterals, storm sewer main replacement extension, sidewalk replacement, reconstruction of the street structure, and the associated pertinences per the plan limits. Plan limits as follows. Front Street from Arch to Michigan, Front Street from Ohio to Hewitt, Third Street from Barragut to Fisher, and Altamont Street from McMillan to Blenheim Hubert. Bids for the project were opened on March 14th, 2019. Three contractors responded to our request for bids. The results are summarized below. Engineers estimate $1,561,087.50. Overstar Inc., $1,273,458.23. Baco Construction Company, $1,474,330.2. Smith Construction, Inc., $1,524,501.73. Tabulation and checking of the bids found errors on one of the contractor's bids. Errors were mathematical and had no bearing on the final outcome. Fiscal effect, the Front Street, Third Street, and Altamont Street reconstruction projects were approved under the fiscal year 2019 budget. These projects will be part of the fiscal year 2019 bond package. Recommendation, award a contract for the package reconstruction project of Front Street, Third Street, and Altamont Street to Overstar, Inc., in the amount of $1,273,458.23, based on the quantities and unit prices bid. Also, allow the city manager to use a 10% and unit prices bid. Also allow the city manager to use a 10% contingency for any unknown circumstances. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Commissioners, what is your pleasure? Commissioner Frazier?
I make a motion to approve, award a contract for the package construction project of Front Street, Third Street, Altamont Street to Oberstar Incorporated in the amount of $1,273,458.23 based on the quantities and unit prices bid. Allow the city manager to use 10% contingency to have any, excuse me, if any known problems.
Is there a second? Commissioner Schlegel?
I'd second that.
Commissioner Frazier, comments? Commissioner Schlegel?
It's nice to see a couple more of these roads that are in dire need get the attention that they've been needing over the years. I'd like to thank the staff for putting them together, and I'm sure that, after living in South Marquette for 10 years, I know how bad Altamont is, and I'm excited for those neighborhoods that are gonna be able to not worry about losing the front end of their vehicles and a couple of those potholes.
Any other commissioner? Commissioner Campana?
I would agree that Altamont's the worst, so really happy to see that. I do have a question about the reconstruction of Altamont between McMillan and Blenheim Huber. They're gonna tear the street up, put in mains. We just put in new sidewalks in the last couple of years. Are those gonna be ripped up? I hope not. They're not gonna be ripped up. They're on the west side of the street.
We have grant obligations that those sidewalks are paid for by Safe Routes to School Grant, and I believe all of the work is gonna be from curb to curb.
What if somebody wants to put a lateral in to their house?
Well, that would be done on an individual basis, so we'd have to tear up and replace.
Who would pay for the sidewalk?
That would be, I believe, the property owner's responsibility through our city code to do that. I'd be happy to verify that and send a note to the city manager tomorrow.
Yeah. It's just they got, the sidewalks are nice. They're needed. There's also retaining walls there, too. You'd just hate to see them unnecessarily brought down. But it will be a good project. I look forward to it. Thank you, Your Honor.
Any other commissioners? Personal comment. I drive that street, I bet four or five times a day, and I, it's certainly, yes, we need to fix it. Not because of me, but there's people that live there that drive it a lot more than I do. That brings us then to the vote. I have the proper motions in place, so all those commissioners desiring to vote in the affirmative, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Anyone voting negative, please indicate by saying no. Hearing none, the motion passes five zero. That brings us to number eight, the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund Development Grant Application. And we will start off with the clerk. This, by the way, will also be a roll call vote, and it will start off with the clerk reading the background.
Thank you, Mayor. Background, at its November 28th, 2016 regular meeting, the city commission voted to relocate efforts to create a universally acceptable inclusive playground from Prescott Park to Matson Park. The existing infrastructure at Kids Cove Playground made any project more highly focused on play equipment, and the playground has been determined to be at the end of its useful life. At its January 28th, 2019 regular meeting, the city commission adopted the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. This plan prioritizes all accessibility projects within the park system and lists the Matson Park universally accessible playground as a high priority. The cost of replacing Kids Cove with universally accessible playground is estimated to be $600,000. Staff has researched grant funding options that may offset the cost of these improvements, and the Michigan Natural Resources Trust-run grant program is best suited for this project. A successful grant application would fund $300,000 or 50% of this project. The Market Playgrounds for All Group has committed to raising the local match of $300,000 through a fundraising campaign. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Board voted at their March 18th, 2019 meeting to recommend any city commission support this grant application and approve the resolution. The application process requires the city commission to approve the resolution of authorization. The final application is due April 1, 2019. Fiscal effect, no city funds would be used in this action. Recommendation, adopt the resolution and support the application for Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund Development Grant to construct a universally accessible inclusive playground at Matson Park. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Two people indicated they would like to speak to this item. Ms. Reynolds, would you like to speak to number eight?
I'm not sure if I want to do any more than that.
Okay. Please. We'll need your name and your address, too.
Alice Reynolds, 220 Northwoods Road, number six, Marquette. I guess one of the things with this playground is my sister, who has polio, she drove around the island every day, and the big slide at the island used to make her just crazy. She would drive around the island and say, "We have to get rid of this big slide and the merry-go-round that's out there right now," as we've actually seen kids who have been seriously damaged by that. So, her thought was, we need to have a universal playground so that children, as my son, can go with his friends and play here. We can have caregivers who can be in a space where they can actually see the kids. When my child was actually at the Cove, there were times I couldn't even see him. So, this is a really wonderful, wonderful project that we've started. We'll have equipment that will be colorful, and I believe that people from all over will come and see this, use this playground. We don't have many playgrounds like this in the area that will be of this caliber. So, for the children who are with disabilities and those who are not, they can be there with their friends. It's easily accessible being down at Matson Park instead of out at the island where we started. That was the first thought, having it out there, but it's easily accessible. Kids can ride their bikes down. It's just very much needed. There are probably possibly more kids and individuals in Marquette with disabilities that a lot of people don't see. They go probably to the Y, and so I think it will bring people out, and it's a wonderful community project, and I have no doubt that you will vote to have us, to help us do this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Coleman, did you have any further comments? Okay. I will need your address for the record.
Okay. Barb Coleman, 985 West College Avenue, Marquette. Again, I guess I just return to the concept that the city has bought into about universal design. It is really to make things usable by all people, and that is, you know, people tend to think that that is only related to wheelchairs, and it is not. It is everyone. Everyone may have trouble with stairs, or your grandma with a toddler, or, you know, and someone using crutches. It's just to make, you know, something, it is heartbreaking to watch someone stand at the side and not be able to make their way to an element on a playground. It is, and the idea of a design where someone could be sitting at a picnic table on the side and be able to see the entire play area, it's a safety issue. It really is. And another thing that, you know, you commonly see on the playground areas are wood chips. Well, they're not accessible. They are not accessible, and if anybody cares about geese, if you think about what they do on the surface, an accessible surface can be washed. So, there are a lot of good reasons for this type of project, but most importantly, to just look at the whole idea of universal design. So, thank you again for having that in the master plan.
Commissioners, your pleasure. Commissioner Campana? Yes, I'm looking for a motion.
I move that we adopt the resolution and support the application for Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund Development Grant to construct a universally accessible inclusive playground at Matson Park.
Mayor Pro Tem Reynolds?
Second.
Commissioner Campana, further comments?
The park that we presently have in the Lower Harbor is old, and it's aging, and it shows it's worn out. I'd be very happy, and I think most people in the city would be very happy to see a new playground there, and as long as we're doing a new playground, to have it accessible for everyone, inclusive for everyone, is, makes it even more desirable. And we're sorely in need of a new playground, and we are fortunate to have this group that's gonna come up with this large match for the fun, or for the grant. It's overwhelming that we are able to do this, so we thank them, and we hope we can proceed with this. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem?
I echo Commissioner Campana's sentiments. I think that this is awesome. Super excited about it. I do have one question. I'm not sure who to aim it to, but I'm just wondering, like, timeline-wise. I know that that might be a question for the future, and I just am curious.
Yeah, so the timeline for these is really, it's dependent upon the fundraising to some extent. So, the grant timeline, if successful, we would have a grant agreement by Christmas. Once we sign a grant agreement, we have three years to complete the project. So, that gives us a little flexibility with fundraising campaign. If the funds become available, you know, within a year's time, we could have a project pretty quickly. If it takes a little bit longer, that's fine, too. We'll program it accordingly.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other commissioners? Comments? Commissioner Frazier?
It's a great project. I commend the committee doing all the work. I was involved with the Prescott Committee back when this project came about with Ms. Reynolds' sister, who was handicapped accessible, and she came up with the idea, and I helped do a lot of research and gave it all the great ideas. I've been working hard. Fortune's taking longer than we thought. We never thought it would take this long to just build a playground, but make it AD accessible costs extra money, but it's all worth it. They've done a great job creating all the good things and looking at every option, and like I said, such for AD access, plus for every type of disability there is, even, they've done a lot of research to try and make it much safer than the playground that is right now. Like Dave said, like Commissioner Campana said, the playground right there is okay, but it's aging, and, you know, my daughter's one of the many kids that have said, "Okay, why isn't this fixed? Why isn't this fixed?" I've been told by John Staff, the Parks, that we can't fix it 'cause it's outdated. We're not allowed to put it back in 'cause it's, you know, not under code anymore, so it'd be great what was done. Matson Park is well-used. Buses come from all places, so I think it'd be great for the community.
Any other commissioner? Commissioner Schlegel?
Thanks. This hits really close to home. My dad had polio as well, Ms. Reynolds, and looking at some of these mockups of the playgrounds, to think that there would have been an opportunity for him to play on that with me when I was a child, that makes it very special. So, I want you to know how much I appreciate what this stands for and that I commend you guys for going through this process. It's gonna be, it's gonna really be something. You don't know until you don't have access to something like that how much it would mean, whether it's a teenager, adult, or young child, to have that time. So, this is really something that is going to be, I think, looked at as just a fabulous project and just something that everybody should strive to have. Thank you.
Let me weigh in with just a couple of comments. Tonight is really a special night because I think we all know intrinsically that there's things that make the city special. There's things that make Marquette a special place to be. Petunia Pandemonium is one of those, and we had a chance to deal with that tonight. And the opportunity here for universal design for the playground, as people have discussed, makes it really special. And that's just a great thing to be able to do. I mean, in a commission chambers, to be able to have citizens that are stepping up and willing to do the things that have to be done to make the city successful. And I cannot give out better accolades. I cannot be any stronger in what I'm trying to express. And, you know, from my heart, thank you for everybody that's involved in making this work. Commissioners, all those voting in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Anyone voting against it, please signify. Oh, sorry, roll call. That's how anxious I am about this.
You're gonna get done.
Please, clerk, roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Campana?
Yes.
Commissioner Frazier?
Yes.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Reynolds?
Yes.
Mayor Stonehouse?
Now I get the vote. Yes. Anyone, we're not. Motion passes five zero. That brings us down to item nine, which is the development agreement with Rippling River LLC for parcel 35 of the Hartwood Forest. Clerk, if you would, please read the background.
Thank you, sir. Background, a purchase agreement for the sale of parcel 35 of the Hartwood Forest to Rippling River Resort LLC was executed on October 30th, 2018. A condition of the purchase agreement was that both parties were to execute a development agreement that specified obligations for each party regarding construction and the placement of conservation and other easements. The development agreement has been prepared and approved by council for both parties and is being presented for your consideration and approval. Approval of the development agreement will prevent the closing of the sale the first week of April 2019. Fiscal effect, none by this action. Recommendation, approve the development agreement as presented. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Mr. Stackwiss, I think you had some additional information?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to let the commission know that approving this item tonight is not the final process for this piece of property. There's two things that will be left to be done. The first one is the drafting and approval of conservation easements, where we get together with the property owner and the subsequent purchaser of the property, and then it came in on Trail Network, and we all sit down and make sure that the conservation easements protect the land, yet also provide for trails and the things like so on and so forth. And then the second item, that was when we went out and did field verification with our surveyor on the number of acres to be placed in the conservation easement by the city, we lost four acres. Went from 592 to 588, so we will just need to do a minor addendum to the purchase agreement to make everything legitimate. So, you'll be seeing those subsequent to this action. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Commissioners, what is your pleasure? Commissioner Frazier?
Approve the development agreement as presented. Motion to approve the development agreement.
Is there a second? Commissioner Schlegel?
Second.
Commissioner Frazier, further comments?
Keep going.
Commissioner Schlegel?
None at this time.
Any other commissioners? Comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of it, please indicate by, excuse me, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying yes. Yes?
Yes.
Any opposed by no? Motion passes five zero. That brings us to public comment. Comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name and address. Anyone wishing to address the commission? Anyone wishing?
Frank Jeff Verito, these are my opinions. After our last meeting, I confronted Mr. Frazier about his claim that I went after someone's wife. He stood dumbfounded. Mr. Campana, his big hero, interjected, saying the remark referred to my allegation that the wife's membership in that club influenced the votes. I had not spoken to Mr. Campana, who doesn't know what he himself means, much less anyone else. This isn't the first time he's interrupted. He's asked to learn basic manners. I have nothing to say to him. Mr. Frazier is a big enough boy to fend for himself. No way had he referred to the wife's membership in that club, nor had Ms. Reynolds. Mr. Frazier just took off on what she'd said, not even knowing what it was about. His sleazy opportunity to build on a lie, probably to impress the students. My alleging the wife's membership influenced the votes is not a personal attack. They can't be blamed for wanting a boathouse. Mr. Frazier has the family name Mr. Frazier has the family name and the money, but there's no sense to his word. He uses his posture to perpetuate a rancidity rather than move on to new issues. In fact, were it not for him and Mr. Campana, I wouldn't even be here tonight. They do it to themselves. Mr. Frazier, based on his relations, knows he can earn brownie points by speaking as he pleases to entertain the big-money players. March eleventh, Mr. Campana also told me to choose my words more carefully over my use of the word arrogant. How then do others somehow derive at the same word to describe the same man with no help from me? Mr. Campana said he'd interrupt if members are called arrogant, still unaware of the fundamentals of democracy, which our attorney carefully explained to him February twenty-fifth. This man has lost the capacity to learn, to reason. If Mr. Campana is so opposed to the fundamentals of democracy, he's as ill-placed here as he appears. He tells me to choose my words more carefully. Before he asserts himself, he needs to learn the difference between a noun and an adjective. Arrogant is the perfect word to describe board members who write during public comment. March eleventh, Mr. Stonehouse gave us a spiel about how this board must represent us all, suggesting that special interest groups come in, all say the same thing, and provide no additional information. This after so many unrelated people spoke to the cannabis items from different angles. Plant majors, criminal justice folks, locals, students, patients, young, old, and more. Sixty-two percent of us voted for it, and three members as well. Although good suggestions can come from anywhere, a tad more consideration is due those who take the time to speak here. Then there's a question of the composition of Mr. Stonehouse's reference group. He'll say that he hears opinions from all walks of life, which is true. Still, the majority of his reference group is slanted. If not, then he's free to properly address my cannabis recommendation of March eleventh.
Anyone else to address the Commission?
Hello, my name's Matt Ludenberger, fourteen oh six Garfield Ave, here in the city of Marquette. I wanted to stay on topic here, so I'm going to try to do this quickly. I went down to the pier, the boardwalk that we put in a couple of years ago. And I'm sorry, I don't remember exactly when it was put in. So quickly, do any of you remember when Founder's Landing Boardwalk was put in? It was ten years, hey? Okay. There are thirty replacement boards. I bring this up because we're putting a boardwalk pier together on Founder's Landing. And the wear and tear on those boards in that small section, I think, is important. Important enough to notice that the difference between the pier proposal at Founder's Landing and the pier proposal at Prescott Park is that Prescott Park uses cement as their cinders to, as a dock. I want to suggest that even though wood looks beautiful, there's no roller bleating on wood boardwalks, for the most part. Any wheeled-type access also has a little bit of an issue. So I would love to see the pier turn into a cement pier. I don't know if that's an extra weight, if that's an extra design process that hasn't been figured in. But I don't see, in the designs and in the descriptions of this pier, a lot of accessibility. I mean, you spoke tonight about the whole park at Matson Park, and I agree completely. But I also like to see that principle put forward, bless you, put forward to the pier. I also noticed that there's no real sitting areas on the pier. So again, there's little design processes that might be changed throughout the future, but if I can make it here tonight and address these, I'm going to try to. On the same note, since right now it's a nature preserve, in essence, water fowl will use it as a nesting area and protection from the wind, I'd like to see more of that in some of the sections that have trees. I'd like to see a swamp area for that reason, if possible. And again, the boathouse design, my experience on crew on the Charles River was each boathouse had a ramp, someone like this with ladders on it that went into the water. I didn't notice that on this dock plan, so that was helpful for both kayaks and skulls. So again, there's, these are the design features that I didn't see, but I wonder if can be incorporated before the final designs or before final pressing is done. One last statement, then. On the water side of things, what's going on with the Tombolo? Now that the water is starting to fade away, I'm curious how the beach is going to be repaired. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone to address the Commission? Anyone further? Public comment is closed. Comments from the Commission? Commissioner Schlegel, can you begin?
I'll go slow so we get over the hour bar. Just kidding. A lot of good topics tonight. I think you nailed it, though, Mr. Mayor, with your sentiment there, and I appreciate that. I'd like to bring up the fact that we have a work session and a public forum coming up. That is going to be next week, Monday, I believe, and Wednesday. Please check on where and when. I believe the one on Monday is here in the chambers at five fifteen. The other one is in Citizen Forum, five thirty, I want to say, but please don't quote me on it right now. Both of those are very important topics, dealing with the Lake Shore Boulevard and the use at Prescott and how it's going to be used in the future, potentially. I guess that's pretty much it for me this week, so, thanks.
Mayor Pro Tem?
I have no comment this evening.
Mr. Frazier?
Good. We all went to MML. A couple of us went to MML. It was a good meeting, lots of information. I told the Michigan Department of Research that we're looking to get the grant from. Just give us a check. Don't worry about it. Just, we'll fill the playground out, just give us a check. But they laughed. A lot of committees, a lot of good information, it was a great meeting. And, you know, we kind of helped everybody out. And just because, you know, fifty people came to our meeting and said, "We want this," doesn't mean the other couple thousand people in the town want it as well. So we take the knowledge from everybody, like Commissioner Stonehouse said. Take knowledge from everybody. We hear it from everybody. And Mr. Virto loves to rip on us already. He's ripped on everybody for twenty years. He's been here, every board member, every mayor. He loves to compliment. And Commissioner Campana has done more for the city than anybody else. And all Mr. Virto has done is just complain about what the city does. Every compliment is supposed to complain about the city. So I agree with Commissioner Campana. Yes, you commented. I just brought that up. You commented on Commissioner Campana's wife being a member of the rowing club. That's what she said, and there's nothing really against you. And Commissioner Campana stuck to it because it's his family. We can take it. You want to rip on me, you want to yell, compliment on me, compliment on Mike Angely, any of us. We can take it. That's what we're here for. You compliment on somebody's family members or friends, and then we can have to draw a line there, so. Enjoy the summer weather, almost summer, spring weather. It's supposed to be spring, but the snow's melting, so just open the road back up, Mike. The ice is almost gone.
Commissioner Campana?
Thank you, Your Honor. Short meeting tonight, sometimes happens. I'm glad to see that we have three streets, at least, that are going to be repaired this spring, this summer, and they're well-needed. Hopefully, there'll be some money somewhere, or we can do more. God knows, we need money to repair streets more. A lot of streets are in need of repair. And to echo Commissioner Schlegel, again, two important work sessions, public forums, coming up. Again, the one on Monday and the one on Wednesday. One for Prescott and one concerning Lake Shore Boulevard. What we're going to do with it, and that's important. Thank you.
Well, let me clean up with just a couple of issues. Ms. Ludenberger talked about the design opportunities for the Piling Field project. And, you know, what we've seen so far has simply been a concept. It was the original engineer's concept of what could be done. And the firm now, GEI, is in the process of putting the detailed plan together for it. So that type of material he was looking for and all of us would like to see are really in the detailed plans, and they certainly have yet to be brought forward. Again, as mentioned previously, too, a couple of big meetings coming up next week. PyPAC, which will be a good opportunity to sit down with the folks at Prescott Park Advisory Group, Advisory Committee, rather, and see what's on their minds and what opportunities may be there. Again, it's a work session. It's not a business meeting. It's not a normal meeting of the City Commission. It is strictly a work session. Work sessions are intended to pass information freely amongst not only commissioners, but also members of, in this case, the PyPAC. So a good opportunity for the public to learn a little bit more about what's happening at Prescott. The Lake Shore Project is really a public forum. In other words, information presented to the public as to what the plans and opportunities are and what the recommended solution would be for that project. So great opportunities for interchange of information, public comment, which certainly is very welcome in both of them, and is part, again, of how we are as transparent as we possibly can as we work our way through these projects. That said, have a good two weeks. Please be safe, and I'll pass it on to the City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to clarify further, the PyPAC work session is Monday, April first, at five fifteen in the Commission Chambers. It will be, as you stated, the public forum for the Lake Shore Boulevard will be on Wednesday, April third, at five thirty to seven thirty in the Citizen Forum Room at Lakeview Arena. Just to comment further on Lake Shore Boulevard and for the Commission's information, we are looking at what it's going to cost us to reopen that road for the summer. We haven't had the opportunity yet, but as soon as the snow allows, we're going to go in and assess the damage that occurred over the winter, put together a cost, and then make a determination whether it's in the best interest of the city to reopen that road or not. The effort will be towards reopening it, I think. I think that's what people want. But it may be in a gravel state or less than paved state. So just to give you a heads up that we're looking at that, and as the snow melts, we'll keep at it. Just a comment, Mr. Ludenberger mentioned the boardwalk boards down in the Founder's area. We got some bad boards down there. I mean, we did. We replaced many of them last summer. And I don't know what our plans are for replacing this summer, but they didn't last at all like we hoped they would. They were put in around two thousand ten or so, yeah, two thousand ten or so, and didn't last nearly long enough. But I assure you, the wood that we're replacing them with will be a lot longer life, so that's all I have. Thank you.